June 21st is recognized as National Indigenous People Day across Turtle Island. Kentville is located within the ancestral territory of the Mi'kmaq people. We all have a responsibility and accountability to uphold in the truth and in the process of truth and reconciliation. We are all treaty people. Good evening, and welcome to the public hearing dated June 21st, 2023. This meeting is in consideration of an application to amend the Land Use Bylaw, L U B, zoning map amendment, rezoning of P I D This public hearing was scheduled in accordance with the Municipal Government Act. This hearing is not a Q and A session. It is an opportunity to present your comments. You will be asked to provide your name prior to speaking. You will have five minutes and only one opportunity to speak. The moderator will be acting as the timekeeper. You will be notified when you have one minute remaining. You are being recorded and livestreamed. We ask that you be respectful of others' opinions. Correspondence received prior to 16:43 on June 20th, 2023 has been logged and registered. A public hearing is a requirement for amendment to the Land Use Bylaw as stated in the Municipal Government Act, Part 8, Section 205. A public hearing allows the public to provide input to council. Council will not be making any decision at this meeting. We are receiving information from the public to assist us in our decision-making for second reading after consideration of any submission made or received at this hearing. Council will have an opportunity to seek clarification from the Acting Development Officer and the developer after their presentation and prior to the public comment phase. This is your last opportunity to provide submissions to council prior to decision-making. The public hearing is called a minimum of fourteen days after first reading. The recommendation to council was presented and first reading in this case occurred at the May 30th, 2023 council meeting. Only those members of council who are present at this meeting may vote on the matter before this public hearing when it comes before council for second reading next week. This meeting is called to order. The Chair notes that we have quorum and there are no regrets. The agenda is fixed as presented and all comments must be related to the rezoning application. Moderator Lindsay Young will provide safety and rules of engagement.
Thank you Mayor Snow, really nice to see a full room tonight. When we do engagement, we need people to be engaged, so check. A few things, the washrooms are just out to my right here, and the fire hall does have a closed-loop system for enhanced hearings, if you're using that, then that's a note for you. Please turn your phones off or put them on vibrate so that folks aren't interrupted while they're speaking. And the exits are here and here. If you haven't signed in, please do that. There's a sheet there and there's a sheet over there, especially if you're planning to get up and give public comment tonight, because we do have to have a record of who you are and that you're here. Other than that, I think that's about all the housekeeping. The rules of conduct that Mayor Snow mentioned include all comments and presentations being made from the designated area. So read, don't shout out from the back of the room. We are not welcoming any applause or other expressions of emotion in kind of relation to what someone has said or not said, so just try to keep it to yourself. And the point of tonight is to hear from everybody. It's a public hearing, so we're the public and we want to hear what you have to say. That's the most important thing. Everything is recorded, we want everybody to have a chance if they want one. Obviously, don't use inappropriate language. Outbursts and criticisms are not really recommended or condoned. Don't hold up any signs if you have one, just keep it down. And debates between council, speakers, staff, and the applicant are not permitted. Mayor Snow already said, it's not a debate, it's a public hearing, we want to hear from the public. So every person, once we call you up, or if you haven't registered to speak, we will have an open kind of mic at the end where you can do that. You'll be limited to five minutes. Mayor Snow already explained that I'll give you a one-minute warning by holding up a card with the number one on it. You'll have time to wrap up what you're saying, and once you go over that one minute, you'll get the gavel and we will ask you to sit down. So that's all I have for now. We're going to get started right away with a staff presentation from our Development Officer Kirsten Duncan.
For those of you who don't know me, I'm Kirsten Duncan, and I work in the Planning Department for the town. Before we get started, just a gentle reminder for everyone of the general rules of conduct that are outlined on the documents that were placed on the chairs that Lindsay just went through. At the end of the day, we just ask you, please be respectful to all participants. Again, thank you Mayor Snow and to our moderator Lindsay Young for opening the meeting. Our public hearing will proceed with a presentation by myself, followed by an opportunity for council to ask any questions of clarification. And then Kirsten Fuller from Brighter Community Planning and Consulting will give a presentation, and there will be another opportunity for council to ask any questions of clarification. We will then move on to the public comment section by first giving the opportunity for those who have registered to speak, followed by a summary of the written comments that we have received, and then we will open the floor to anyone who wishes to speak. After the public comments are completed, the applicant will have the opportunity to respond to any points that were raised. Please note that we may decide to take a recess every hour if needed or halfway in So we've received a number of comments regarding certain aspects of this proposed development over the course of the past few months, and I'd like to take a moment to clarify the next steps. Should the rezoning application be approved? Council is considering this application to rezone P I D number 55247761. Should the application be successful prior to the beginning of any development on the site, the developer will need to provide a number of additional documents and plans to the Planning and Engineering Departments for approval. These plans and documents include but are not limited to engineering plans regarding the road layout and servicing, subdivision plans in the tentative and final stage, stormwater management plans, and the required 5% parkland dedication. These additional plans can be very costly to undertake and therefore requiring them prior to the rezoning approval could place a large financial burden on the applicant if the application is denied. Additionally, if the application is approved, prior to any development permit being issued on the proposed R4 lots, site plan approval as per Policy GD30 of Municipal Planning Strategy is required. The Development Officer's approval or refusal of said site plan may be appealed to Town Council in importance with Section 236 of the Municipal Government Act, which allows for continued public input around the development of the property. Before we go any further, I would just like to recap the timeline of events that have led us up to this moment. So on September of '22, an application and associated documents were submitted to the town by Brighter Community Planning and Consulting on behalf of Bryson Developments Limited, and a public information was held on September 27th. In November of '22, staff from different departments came together to review and discuss the application and the potential impact to the community. Shortly thereafter in December, staff delivered formal comments to the applicant requesting further information relating to the proposed development and the rezoning application. Between February 22nd and February 27th, 2023, the applicant submitted a revised concept plan for the rezoning, as well as additional supplementary information. Staff brought forward three reports in total to C I C between the months of March and May, addressing the application, several questions and concerns surrounding the development. At the meeting of council on May 30th, 2023, first reading was given to this application. This meeting was open to the public and was livestreamed on the town's YouTube channel. After that, the approved ad outlined in the public hearing, which we're at tonight, was sent to the Valley Journal Advertising Newspaper to be circulated on June 10th and June 17th, as well as being posted on our social media platforms and on our town's website. Which leads us to tonight, the public hearing, which will give council the opportunity to hear all comments from the public as the Municipal Government Act. After tonight, council will be able to give second reading on the application and will vote to approve or deny the request. Should council approve the rezoning application, then a notice of approval will be published in the newspaper, and an agreed person may appeal the decision to the Utility and Review Board within fourteen days of the published notice. Should council deny the rezoning application, then the applicant may appeal the decision to the Utility and Review Board within fourteen days of council's decision. As I've noted, Brighter Community Planning and Consulting has applied for this rezoning application on behalf of the landowner, Bryson Developments Limited. The subject property is a 43.2 acre parcel land that is vacant and includes a portion of the Mitchell Brook Water Course on the west side of the property. This application is requesting to rezone the identified property to a mix of single-unit dwelling lots as seen in yellow, one- and two-unit dwelling lots as seen in orange, and high-density residential as seen in pink. This property is currently zoned R5 Large Lot Residential, and its surrounding land uses consist of existing single-unit dwellings, parkland, bulk vacant land designated for residential development, and the proposed arterial road. At this juncture, I'd like to just take a moment to review the map that's on the screen. This is a map that is a part of our Generalized Future Land Use Map, which is a part of our municipal planning strategy. This map indicates the general land use designations for this property and the surrounding area, which has been approved by council. You can see that the land is mainly designated for residential use, as symbolized by the Going back to the conceptual plan that's shown on the screen now, the applicant is requesting the combination of R1 and R2 zoned lots along the extensions of Acadia Drive and Mount Vincent Drive. An unnamed street lined with R2 zoned properties buckpered by existing dedicated parkland is proposed to connect the two road extensions. A short 400-meter cul-de-sac is proposed to intersect with Carlton Drive, providing access to more R2 zoned properties. South of the extension of Acadia Drive, the applicant is requesting R4 zoning for the remaining 18.8 acres that borders on the proposed arterial road, the Donald E. Hiltz Connector. Three multi-unit buildings are shown on the concept plan with area that's left for possible future development, which will be required to go through site plan approval. At this time, the applicant is proposing 32 R1 lots, which is 32 units, 56 R2 lots, which is 112 units, and R4 zoning to accommodate multi-unit apartment buildings. The concept plan does not yet include the 5% parkland dedication that's required for subdivision approval, however, that will be negotiated at the subdivision stage. There are five access points proposed to this development from existing roads, from McDonald Park Road through Carlton Drive, from Mount Vincent Drive, from Acadia Drive, and again from Acadia Drive through a new unnamed street identified as Street A on the concept plan, and eventually from the proposed Donald Hiltz Connector once it's We have worked with the applicant to encourage the use of single-unit zoned properties adjacent to existing single-unit zoned properties to ensure compatibility with the existing neighborhood. The applicant and developer have been receptive to these requests and have worked with the Planning Department to get to a point where we believe there is ample R1 zoned lots in this proposal. I'd also like to leave this time to acknowledge that single-unit dwellings are permitted within the one- and two-unit zone, and as well as ancillary dwelling units are permitted When reviewing this rezoning request and eventual development against the municipal planning strategy, this request supports several objectives of council. Those objectives are to provide a variety of housing types to accommodate the various needs and desires of town residents, to ensure that future residential development occurs in suitable locations with adequate water, sanitary sewer, storm sewer, transportation, and recreational services available, to actively promote and facilitate the development of housing within the town in order to attract a greater proportion of the regional housing market, and to facilitate the efficient growth and development of the town. There are a few policies of council contained within the MPS that I would like to highlight. A lot of work on the screen, I'm not going to read them all. Section 15.6 in Policy IM4 of the Municipal Planning Strategy talks generally about when MPS amendments are not required, and I would just like to highlight the first paragraph of this section as it reads, "The Generalized Future Land Use Map designate the overall general land uses that are permitted in various zones throughout town. Residential rezonings, for example, will only be considered by council if the property in question is within the area designated residential on the Generalized Future Land Use Map," as I showed you in an earlier slide. In order for council to approve the rezoning that does not fall within the appropriate designation, the property owner would have to propose a concurrent amendment to both the MPS and L U B, which is not what we're facing here tonight, because it is within that residential zone. Below that, Section 15.9.2 rezonings and Section 15.9.2.1, rezoning application requirements, along with Policy IM7, outlines the specific requirements of any rezoning application that is brought forward for consideration, which has been satisfied for this application. Policy IM8, which spans two slides for being here tonight because it's so long, outlines specific information that council shall consider when responding to a rezoning request. This list includes compatibility of the proposed use and the scale of the development with the adjacent properties, and how the development could resolve any potential compatibility issues, the adequacy of existing services, schools, road networks, recreational facilities, and community facilities, and ensuring that there is efficient use of existing and new infrastructure. We consider the environmental impacts, the suitability of the site, the ability for emergency services to respond, and that the development conforms with the intent of the MPS, and that the financial ability and the financial ability of the town to absorb any costs relating to the development. Staff have thoroughly reviewed this policy and believe that all criteria have been met. Policy IM9 encourages council to take into consideration any other potential development scenarios that may be permitted as a result of a proposed zone change when evaluating a rezoning application. On an R4 zoned lot, the Kentville Land Use Bylaw currently permits multi-unit dwellings and regulates the maximum number of units based on the area of the property parcel. The bylaw reads that for minimum lot area of multi-unit dwellings, which is considered by four or more units, one would need 7,000 square feet of lot area for the first five units, and 1,000 square feet for each unit thereafter. Based on this map and the size of the requested R4 property being 18.8 acres in total, the maximum number of units permitted on this lot would be around 816 units. With that total number of units in mind, the developer would also have to be, or would also be required to provide onsite amenities space, which could take form of a combination of balconies, gardens, landscaped open space, dunes, pools, et cetera. The onsite amenities space requirements outlined in the bylaw are as followed. For bachelor and one-bedroom apartments, you would need 200 square feet of amenities space per unit. For two bedrooms, you would need 225 square feet of amenities space per unit. And for three or more bedrooms, you would need 255 square feet of amenities space per unit. The provision of requiring this space onsite with the added obligations of parking and building setbacks could influence the overall feasible density of this site. Regardless of whatever build form this site is developed to be, it will be required to go through the site plan approval process. The Province of Nova Scotia has six statements of provincial interest, which outline the province's vision for protecting Nova Scotia's land and water resources, as well as addressing issues related to the growth of our communities. The statements are intended to help provincial government departments and municipalities make land use decisions that have province-wide implications and support the principles of sustainable development. Municipalities must take the statements into account when creating or reviewing land use policies and regulations. Only two of the statements are applicable to this rezoning application. One is infrastructure, where the goal is to make efficient use of municipal water supply and municipal wastewater disposal systems. This statement outlines that unplanned and uncoordinated development increases the demand for costly conventional infrastructure. It states that planning documents must consider encouraging maximum use of existing infrastructure by enabling infill development on vacant land and higher-density development, and advises directing community growth that will require the extension of infrastructure to areas where servicing costs are being minimized. This development proposal intends to make use of existing infrastructure that has been invested in and extended over the past 35 years, making efficient use of our existing services and allowing expansion where deemed reasonable. The other statement of provincial interest is regarding housing, and the goal is to provide housing opportunities to meet the needs of all Nova Scotians. This statement declares that adequate shelter is a fundamental requirement for all Nova Scotians, and furthermore, that a wide range of housing types is necessary to meet the needs of Nova Scotians. This statement also notes that depending upon the community and the housing supply and need, the measures that should be considered in planning documents include enabling higher densities, smaller lot sizes, and reduced yard requirements that encourage a range of housing types. By council considering this rezoning application for R1, R2, and R4 development, higher densities of residential development will be able to be permitted, which will enable a greater range of housing types. In summary, the request to rezone property identified as 55247761 is consistent with the objectives and policies of the municipal planning strategy. The proposal is appropriate for the area and is in keeping with the surrounding development, ensuring compatibility with the existing neighborhood by placing single-unit dwellings adjacent to existing single-unit dwellings, and slowly increasing density as you move along the proposed road, providing additional housing stock and choices impacting the housing supply in Kentville positively. By considering alternative forms, build forms, sorry, such as two-unit dwellings and multi-unit dwellings, the proposed development will be considered an efficient use of land, and it makes efficient use of existing infrastructure and road networks. That's my presentation. It does feel super awkward, I don't have applause, but thank you Kirsten for that. Are there any clarifying questions the council wishes to ask at this time? Well, over here. Is this safe?
Thank you. Given recent events in Nova Scotia, I was wondering if you could, if rather, there has been a emergency evacuation lens applied to these types of developments moving forward in the town?
Thank you, Councilor York. I think due to the events as you've identified, it creates even more urgency for us to increase the current demand, or the current stock that we have in the area, and give the ability for different types of densities depending on the resident's situation, whether or not they're able to purchase a home or if they're looking for a rental for a short
What I can say clearly was that I was specifically thinking of forest fire evacuations, and as we relate to just massive neighborhoods having to close and pack up and leave within a half an hour, those types of lenses have been applied to these types of applications.
My apologies. I think that one thing that Kentville does do well when it comes to development of subdivisions is that we have a well-connected road network that really gives the opportunity for folks to have different ways of getting out of the area in a time of need.
Councilor Seven? Thank you. That's fine, don't worry. Kirsten, you want me to go back up? It was slide two, I think it was, and where you talked about, where you started to talk about the site plan approval piece. I just would like a little bit more clarification on when that site plan approval comes into effect, and maybe a bit more clarity around what that site plan approval means. I know that it's not a development agreement, but I think there's some mirrors there as well, so thank you for that. Someone's got their phone on out there and can hear it ringing.
Certainly. So site plan approval is a mechanism that is not quite a development agreement, but still gives the town the ability to request an overall plan that addresses certain areas such as buffering and parking locations and all of those things. Any property that is within 30 meters of the subject property would be delivered a mail-out with a full comprehensive package that shows how that site will be constructed or is proposed to be constructed. When a developer enters into a site plan approval process, they also have to sign a letter of undertaking that identifies that they do, they will adhere to the site plan and they will build it as designed and as shown on that plan. And it just gives us, is another tool that's not quite as timely as development agreement and costly, but still gives us some sort of control around what that development looks like. So for this purpose, because we are R4 lots- So for this purpose, because the R4 lot went back onto lower densities such as single unit and one and two unit, then that is what the trigger is for that to be required for any sort of development on that land.
And who monitors that and who carries the cost of that? Thank you.
So, it is up to the town to monitor and make sure that it's being upheld. There is no cost, well, I guess the only cost to the town at this moment would be the mail-out cost to send that via hard copy to folks within that 30-meter range. At this moment, we don't charge any fees for site plan approval, but that is something that council could consider in the future to help cover that cost. But that is about the only cost at this moment. Do we have any other questions of clarification from council? All right. Thank you Kirsten. So at this time, we'll invite Crystal Fuller, the representative applicant, to come forward and make a presentation. Here, hold it.
I can't stay still for that long. Good evening, everyone. My name's Crystal Fuller. I'm, we've heard it a couple times, with a company called Brighter Community Planning. I'm a planning consultant. I'm here tonight representing Mitch Bryson of Bryson Developments. And I was sitting next, sitting next to him and I turned off his phone. In his defense, it was his daughter. So, I'm going to go through a brief presentation because I have 10 minutes. And I'd just like to apologize upfront. This is the first nice night we've had in a while, mine. And then you were in here, so thank you for coming on. So Kirsten's done a great job in kind of explaining the policies and the process and why, what the policies mean. I'm going to tell you why, from a planning perspective, this site makes sense or different for this zoning. And just to be clear, this isn't about the specifics of the proposal. As Kirsten said, there's a variety of processes that have to happen. This is sort of step one of, if council approves it, a variety of things that have to happen, including subdivision process for the lots. And that will happen whether or not there are one lots or R2 lots or R4 lots. It still needs to go through subdivision and site plan approval. And subdivision isn't sort of a one and done thing. It's a multi-step process that usually takes the best part of a year to get through because there's a variety of technical considerations. So, I'm not going to talk to you about that. You know your community, that's where it is. The thing to note about this is that proposed Donald Hill Collector, I don't need to be on camera. So, sit down. And we're going to talk more about that and why that's important. Kirsten's talked about the zoning, not going to talk about that. This is what the community may look like. This, these lawns, however, are the proposed zones. So, as Kirsten indicated, the town was very clear with us that they wanted to have R1 next to R1 so that there's continuity between the R1, the existing development, and what's going to go next to it. The new R1s then transition into R2s and R4s. So there's a transition from the low density to the higher density. The higher density is next to that Donald Hill Collector. I am going to talk about that, I swear, in a minute. But this is all about maximizing and maximizing the land, maximizing the infrastructure and providing some of that much-needed help. So, those are some numbers. What's important to note is this is a rezoning. This is not a development approval for the specifics of this development scheme. I'm sorry, councillor. I don't want to stand in front of that person smaller than me so they can see through it easily. So, this is what it's proposed to look like right now. There's been a fair bit of engineering and thought put into this. The zoning boundaries are what this is about tonight, not about the specifics of the development. That will come later, again, through these processes of subdivision and site plan approval. And anybody who is in, who bought, who's in the game, knows that the market changes. Nobody thought years ago would it ever get to the wrong situation in terms of housing, in terms of how much you pay for a piece of lumber. So, things change. Regulations change. It takes time to develop and it is not uncommon for regulations to change while the developer's in process and they have to adapt to new regulations, provincial and municipal. So, we don't want to indicate to you, we don't want to indicate to you that this is written in stone because we can't, because the regulations may change, the market may change, all sorts of things may change. This is, this is what the development wants to do now. The zoning boundaries, if council passes them, won't change unless they go through another similar process. That's why I'm encouraging everyone to remember this is about the zoning boundaries, not about is that a 64-unit apartment building? It's about the R4. So, I'm a planner, not an engineer. There's been a lot of technical studies that have gone on so far to give comfort to council, particularly and through their staff people, that this is a possible development that can happen. Those technical studies included traffic studies, servicing analysis, stormwater concepts. I'm not going to get into the details of those. The engineers with the stamps have provided those. They've been vetted by municipal staff or the staff's consultants and it's been provided in some form to council. More detail will happen in subdivision because that's where it occurs. You can't regulate these details through a land use bylaw. They are regulated through subdivision. And so, at this stage, excuse me, the test is really, Kent, is it possible to be done? And the answer is yes, but more studies will have to be provided at the appropriate time. And it's not just a matter of money for the developer not doing it now. It's also because you don't regulate these things through the land use bylaw and regulations change. I just kind of keep, and I've been in the planning field for 25 years. You start at one place and then two years later, the province brings out new regulations or a new council comes in and they change regulations. There is, so your question about wildfires was, is a great one and timely. And there's been a lot of sadness and trauma in Nova Scotia around that. And councils all over the province quite rightly are turning their minds to this. From my perspective, I'm not a traffic engineer, but as a planner, this actually improves connectivity, especially with the recent funding announcement that you've had about Donald Hill's Collector and when that comes in. That will provide much-needed connectivity for vehicles out of this subdivision. But, and even without that, it does provide connectivity to adjacent, to adjacent areas. It all does eventually lead down to what I call the number one, but, down there. And that's, I mean, that's the way Kentville's set up. This, with the Donald Hill's Collector actually addresses some of those concerns, I think, that you have. But I think the lens, probably, I'm guessing, has not been brought to this because the wildfire situation is reasonably, well, it's in an emergency still. But municipalities across the province will be thinking about this for sure. So, Donald Hill's Collector, this is Kirsten's mountain. She's a really talented mountain maker, I have to say, so we'd be more without them. Thank you. So, there has been some federal funding. But what's astounding to me is that the town of Kentville, for two decades, almost, thereabouts, has been planning for this collector to go along the top. And you, you know, it doesn't take a master mapmaker to sort of see that that always was the intention. There's actually been land purchased to allow for that. So, that connection has always been in the, not always, but has been in the plans for a long time, waiting for those development pressures, the money, the situation and the timing all to come together. And it looks like it has all come together. And it is, you know, I won't speak to that. That's really something for staff to speak to. But certainly, it's in your planning documents that that is something you want to do. It's, funding has been sought and there's probably enough traffic pressure on Park Street for that to be warranted. The other thing about Park Street and the Donald Hill's Collector is this is just a rough, rough map. Not all these properties are, you know, there's stuff on them. But the point is, there's huge swaths of land that are either vacant or are potentially available for redevelopment that are underutilized. This is Kentville's development, next development area. And, and I know the town is, and I've suggested to the town that they need to do some planning to ensure that this develops in an appropriate way that's reflective of the people of Kentville. So I think maybe I'll leave it, leave it at that. But the Donald Hill, the Hill's Collector is part of that consideration for how this area is going to develop. It is the spine upon which everything else is going to be built. There's a whole bunch of work that needs to happen, sewer water, parks, what the form looks like, the density, all that sort of stuff. But this is clear in your planning documents that this is where this is going to happen. We talked a little bit about parks. I think Kentville has done an amazing job of maintaining a parks network. I mean, my kids are both in ball and soccer and I'm up in, I would enhance for them here all the time, playing on your fields. I'm here loft playing on your fields. So, so you have a lot there. There's a lot in the area. And as this developing area on the west end of town continues to grow, there's going to be more brought out here. I know that is the intention of the town. So it is an area that is well-supported from a recreational perspective. So, it just, I want to quickly just talk about the market. And I know we've heard ad nauseam, probably all of us, that there's a housing crisis, but there is. And we talked just a minute ago about the wildfires. There's another 200 people in Nova Scotia looking for homes, probably not down in the valley, but it impacts supply chain. It impacts the ability to find people to actually do the work. There's a real crisis going on and Kentville is growing. So, I just want to point you a couple things here. Up there, this is all taken from CMHC. You can see since October 9, 2019 to October 2022, there's actually been growth in the rental, number of rental units. However, it's equally important to note that there's been a decrease in the vacancy rates, right? Even though you have more apartments, you still are not making any progress. It's like paying the minimum amount on your credit card. You think you're doing all right, but you're actually sliding backwards every month. That's what's happening here. You're not making any progress on providing apartments and rental opportunities. And then moreover, anybody who's got kids trying to move back home or trying to find a place for yourself, for your parents to live, rents are not going down either. There's a crunch. So, solutions? Well, obviously, I'm up here suggesting to you that the solution is having more within the marketplace for people to choose from. You're growing as a population. And I keep on telling people because I think it's important for you to realize the province of Nova Scotia, as set by their current premier, said they want to double our population by 2060. It is growing. The rate of growth is slowing a little bit in the post-COVID mode, but we are still growing and people want to live in Kentville. So, you know, you can see since 2001 to 2021 what your growth rate is. I would venture to guess that if you look at sort of since 2018 to 2022, we didn't do that calculation, that growth rate is probably higher than that kind of trend you see there. What you also have are an awful lot of one-person households and two-person households. You can see the number. And you can also see that your proportion of single detached, that's in the pretty blue. You have a mismatch between your population growth, the need of one and two unit, of one and two people in a home, and the type of units that you're, that are being created in Kentville. There needs to be more choice. And that's just not Kentville. That's across Nova Scotia. There needs to be more choice. What is interest rates now? There's probably a bit of a room, is it 7%? It just went up to, oh, great. Thank you. Is it 7%? It's a bit higher. So 7%, when I got my mortgage, it's something like 3%. 7% is driving a lot of people who are right on the edge of affordability of the housing market. And they're driving them to have to consider rentals. That's just what's happening. So there's pressure on the rental market because there's not much housing, interest rates and the cost of power. So, the solution is densification. The solution is having more choice. The solution from a municipal perspective is to make better use of your existing infrastructure or put new infrastructure in a place that makes sense, that connects, that deals with issues like wildfire and commitment. So, I've probably, some of you who've been at my presentations have seen this before, but this is sort of an international model. The world for the longest time, in the post-war world, was built in this, right? 1940s and 50s and 60s and 70s, everybody was here. What we recognize, what we recognize is we have to be more in here somewhere. Not, we don't have enough room on the planet to put everybody in a single unit house. We just don't. The province of Nova Scotia, through its environment plan, which came out in February, I think, or January, talks about this. We have to do development differently. How development, so this is sort of that single-unit dwelling kind of model that, you know, there's somewhere between one and four units depending how you organize the number of houses on a street. But that's what you're going to get in terms of density. So, places like Tantatlin and Hammond's Plains, that's more like 1.2, like 0.75 of a house per acre. That's really low. That forces everybody to walk. And in this situation, this is better, the single-unit dwelling. And that's probably even denser than what you have up there now. So, I show this as an example of what Windsor has done. This is not future, this is existing. Some of it's proposed, but this is the crossing in Windsor's done by my client. That's probably more like 15 units per acre. These are, these are, you know, lower density. These colors right here are apartment buildings. And then, you know, these are singles around it. So, this kind of mixed community where there's a variety of options. I hope that's on number one. That's, that's sort of the, that's sort of, you know, that's, that is something that allows us to respond to some of these challenges who I just talked about. And now we're back here at what's about 9.5 units an acre. And is probably a lower density than many of us planners would like to see because that mix, that mix is still predominantly too low-density with the singles. But makes, maybe makes sense here because of the existing community. So, I've said before that, you know, single-unit dwelling is sort of going away. Increasingly, municipalities are getting rid of the zone entirely or allowing for accessory dwelling units. So, we see a number of benefits to this. I will go through them, you sort of, I think, get the gist of this. But there is transition. The singles are next to existing singles, that's purposeful and planned. This is sort of some of the housing stock. And sometimes developers throw stuff up and you go, they'll never look that nice. But this is this built. It builds on the existing infrastructure of the town. It has a bunch of housing options that it provides. This is just a mock-up. This has not been built anywhere. But it creates a denser, more efficient, diverse form. It's more environmentally friendly, promotes walking. Density is near that future collector road. That collector road shows intent of the town. And it now promotes your infrastructure. So, with that, I'll leave it. Thank you.
Thank you, Crystal. You might as well stick close. If there are any clarifying questions from council, we'll do those now. Councilor Maxwell?
Thank you. I understand everything you said. There's a couple of questions that I'd like to have an answer to. I'm kind of wondering what your build-o plan is? Like, what do you plan to build first, next, next, next? Or is there a plan? And secondly, how quickly do you plan to build that entire 40-some-odd acres? So, I'm looking for what you, what you're building first and then how fast. So I'm looking for what you're building first and then how fast do you want it to start?
So we're at the rezoning stage at this point, so it kind of depends if you, if what council's decision is here. And then we go into the subdivision process, which takes that. Let's be optimistic and it takes six months, no pressure, Kristin. But doubtful. So there's a first, for that first step where you get tentative approval, then there's a construction season to build. And then there's probably another four to five months to turn it over to the town and for them to do all their inspections. That's to build the roads and put the infrastructure in. So we're looking what, 18 months, two years, just to kind of get through the process? That's if you start immediately. So build-out, that's always a tricky question and it sounds like I'm avoiding the answer, but the reality is in two years, who knows what the market's going to be? I didn't expect 2018, I didn't expect COVID. Both of those things changed the market fundamentally. We can turn to your resident banking expert to ask them what interest rate's going to be, because if it's a 10%, the market's going to slow considerably. So I think any developer would say that they'd like to have it built and sold tomorrow. My crystal ball is frankly not that great. So there's enough, there's a lot of pent-up demand in the market. So the market will absorb what it can absorb and the developer will respond to that. That's generally kind of how it works. So I can't give you timelines on this one, Kristal.
Anyone else have a clarifying question? Kate, Deputy Mayor Savage?
Thank you, Lili. So Kristal, when you talked about the subdivision process, site plan approval, and then more detail will happen, more studies would happen. What if these studies indicate some issues? What does that mean?
Well, there's always going to be issues identified and the developer's job is to solve them to the satisfaction of the town according to the town's regulations and the province's regulations. Because we're not just trying to satisfy the town and your regulations. There are stormwater management policy, policies, requirements that the province has to make sure that it's net zero stormwater management. So it's not if there's going to be issues identified, it's going to be what are those issues? And is the solution proposed by the developer going to be sufficient for the town? And if it's not, they turn it down. If it is, they improve it. In terms of the site plan approval, that process, again, is almost like a mini-development agreement. And I think you're probably aware of the process, where there's negotiations back and forth. And there's, you know, positions put forward by the town and the developer comes back and says, we can do this or that. So again, it's not that there's risk if you would ever get something, even a permit for a deck, you know? I administer those for a different municipality. Half the time I'm calling up and asking questions and prodding and saying, I need this, or can you move it here? So it's a developer's responsibility to demonstrate that it is compliant with the appropriate regulations and it's the town's responsibility to make sure we do. And I've never had a subdivision plan submitted that hasn't had questions or additional information required to go with them. Sad?
Yes, does. Anyone else? Okay, going once. Thank you, Kristal. We are going to get to the public comment portion of the evening. As we've kind of said earlier, people who registered to speak will go first. And then we'll have kind of a summary overview, general, of the comments that we've received already through correspondence. I did notice a lot of latecomers, so if you came and you want to speak, you absolutely need to register. If you can't find the sheet either there or there, Jennifer can bring it to you, just raise your hand and we'll get to you. So we did have four people register to speak. I won't come back up every time and say who the next person is, so just kind of pay attention to where you are in the order, if that's okay. So we have Mike Carter up first, and then we're going to be looking for Susan Bowser, Leanne Jennings, and then Kate Bowser. So we're going to set up the mic, just give us one sec. Okay, so mics first. Mike Carter, if you're here, come on up. You're kind of getting paid for this. I'm going to time you. You have five minutes. When you're at four minutes, I'm going to hold this up kind of over there. And then you just wind it down. If you go over your final minute, then your cell's going to gap you. And really, it's just going to be, just to keep giving everybody an opportunity.
Thanks, Monique. So Mayor Snell, councillors, and other town representatives, thank you for this opportunity to make our concerns known again. This wouldn't be the first time I've brought concerns forward. I should introduce myself, sorry. I'm Mike Carter. I live with Louise at 48 Acadia Drive. So I think it would be pretty naive to think that our sleepy little quiet community on Acadia Drive is going to stay that way. We recognize that there's a need for change, a need for growth, the need for housing stock, and we embrace that idea. We were excited by the idea that the community is going to grow. And we saw huge swathes and tracts of land there that represent the future of the town of Kemphol. And it's an exciting time for us. But at that same time, we have some pretty great concerns about the rezoning application that's before you for your consideration. I've organized our concerns into half a dozen kind of pockets and I'll try to present those briefly. Our first concern is with policy RS 23. That's the, that's from the municipal planning strategy. We saw that earlier, I think on Kristin's presentation tonight. And there actually are four, as we understand it, four specified evaluation criteria that are before you as councillors for your consideration. And I understand all four of those have to be met before you could approve this current rezoning application. We believe that the current application is deficient in three of the four. And our observation was actually noted by CMD Community Design in their report as well. So those three, briefly. Other utilities, specifically, that's with regard to the Mitchell Water Corps system. We don't believe that that's been properly provided for. Number two would be the efficient and safe movement of pedestrians and cyclists in the existing, and certainly the existing, community. The traffic study, we feel, was inadequate. We feel the traffic study was inappropriate and it doesn't provide an adequate basis for you to make a decision. And number three, parks number community uses, safe and central locations. We do not believe that that's been properly accounted for. So again, on those grounds alone, we would say that the Bryson Developments rezoning application before you is not supported. Our next pocket of concern is around pedestrian safety and the lack of parkland and open spaces. Wow, when we first moved to Acadia Drive, we couldn't get over the kids playing on the sides of the street and sometimes in the street. And certainly lots of bike traffic with children in the street. We were surprised by that at first. And it was a bit disconcerting because we thought, wow, should kids really be playing in the street? Isn't the street really primarily for vehicles? And then we looked around and we realized the street is the only common area that the kids in our community have to play in. And how did that happen? Like as a community, as a town, how did we allow that to happen? You know, there are no local playground areas or small areas where they can, where they can play otherwise. That's why they're in the street. And that's going to be a problem as time goes on. Number three, next for us, with the policy IM 8, this is around the evaluative criteria for rezoning. I think with Kristin's slides, we saw there are 16 matters that must be the intention of council to have regard for. We believe that at least half of those are not sufficiently met or deficient. Adequacy and proximity of recreation again, potential for erosion, and suitability of site graves. Next on my list is the infilling of ravines. There's a significant ravine directly behind our home in 48 Acadia Drive. We believe, the plan shows that that will be infilled and houses will be put directly on top of that. That will have a significant impact on range. Next would be proposed buffer for existing residents. The plan shows that we're going to have an R2 building directly behind our home. That's not acceptable to us. And finally, Wolfville, we were in Wolfville on the weekend, looking at other places where people live. And they're planning an entire development in their east end of Wolfville. If there's anybody in the room tonight that's unfamiliar with that, I encourage you to look at the planning that's gone into that development. It's substantial. It includes parklands, solar exposure on parklands. The traffic study that was done in Wolfville seems significantly different, better than the one that was done in this particular case. For some reason, they seem to be holding things to a higher level, a higher standard than we're looking at in this particular case. So in conclusion, I'll wrap up. We're asking mayor and councillors that you look carefully at our concerns. We ask you to please vote no to the proposed development. We don't think it's acceptable. Thank you.
I'm coming, I'm coming. I know, I know, it's a long way. I said I wasn't going to come back up, but we did have some latecomers and I just wanted to go over the rules again one more time, just for those folks that may have been late and didn't want to speak. All the comments and presentations need to be made from the speaker's microphone and they will be recorded. You're asked to do not to applause or have outbursts or expressions of support or disdain for whoever has spoken, just to keep it quick. And we don't want inappropriate language. We're asking for no outbursts and don't hold up any signs. And again, it's not a debate. So don't feel like when you come up to speak that you have to negate what somebody else has already said. Just say what you think and we're going to report all of it. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Hi. I'm Susan Bowser and I live at 26 Mount Vincent Drive with my husband, Michael, and my daughter Kate. Thank you for the opportunity to comment. Hang on. It was too high, I think. How's that? The proposal, the proposed rezoning represents an exponential increase over the current size of McDonald Heights. The rezoning would add 400 new residences, which is an over 250% increase to the size of our community. We currently sit at something less than 150 residents. While my family supports development, including intensive development, the magnitude of this increase raises for us two major concerns. I'll address two things. These two things, and they're both related directly to policy RS 23, are stormwater management and the safe movement of pedestrians and cyclists. First, stormwater management. Living on Mount Vincent is a little like being the canary in the cage for what can happen as land is clear cut for development up the hill. Hill is an important piece of the equation, but land proposed for this intensive development is all uphill from existing homes. And we all know what water, what happens to water with gravity. It comes down. Our experience so far has not been stellar. At any time of heavy rainfall or spring runoff, a burbling brook suddenly springs up, coming straight for our foundation, from town-owned land no less. I sent you all photos of this on March 27th. If you're a homeowner, this is not a happy circumstance. My husband, who has multiple health issues, has been out in the rain and muck, digging a trench to divert it back onto your property. As pointed out by the CMD report, the degree of clarity on the treatment of stormwater is lacking. This is extremely important to us as owners. We have a French drain, a triple backup sump pump, and after watching spring runoff, just for fun, we got some bags that filled with water to do the job of sandbags. Furthermore, the developers' own engineering firms stated that the current infrastructure could handle 354 residences, not the 400 proposed. I'm sure that they would be coming up with other means, but I'm telling you, when I see that water coming to my house, I want to know what is planned right now, if they're going to build uphill from me. Finally, did you notice the little gusher that's sprang up in the middle of McDonald Parkway this weekend? Yep. That presumption in the engineer's report that the infrastructure was in sound condition is looking a little iffy. And now the second, my second concern relates to the safe movement of pedestrians and cyclists. There are no sidewalks on Acadia. This isn't ideal, but it's not so bad at our current community size. But a growth of 250% blows safety right out of the water. The traffic study was incorrect in saying that most people walk on the grass. The study took place where Acadia, Donovan and Palmetto, Intercept Park Avenue, and when our kids were in school. There are no homes on the corner lots of any of these streets, so sure people walked on the grass there. But I've lived here over a year, am out and about all the time, and I have never seen one person walk on the grass of a residence. Furthermore, walking on lawns is not suitable for kids riding bikes, my daughter in her power chair, or people who aren't as steady on their feet as they once were, and lots of other reasons as well. Now at 400 new residences, and let's say a bare minimum of one car per residence. Yeah, I know that Donald Hills Connector will be there in five to 10 years. But until then, new residents are all using Acadia. So I want my grandkids to be safe and I think I can expect from council that they will be kept safe. Before closing, let me come back to topography. The construction period is when runoff will be at its worst. Land is clear cut, taking away natural drainage. Connections to infrastructure aren't there. Roads have not been finished to lead to storm drains, even once the infrastructure's in place. With all the building taking place uphill from all of us, we as residents deserve assurance that plans are in place to manage stormwater after construction, but perhaps more importantly, during the 10-year construction period, when the risk of excess runoff is really at its highest. We take our responsibility as homeowners seriously and we simply expect the same due diligence on the part of town council in ensuring that whatever development takes place does so in a way that protects our community. This proposal, as presently constituted, does not have our support as homeowners. And I thank you for your attention.
Good evening. My name is Leanne Jennings. I live at 22 East Way Drive. So I do not live in an area of town that is immediately impacted by this proposal, but I am coming here to share some thoughts with you today because I care deeply about the future of our town and the quality of life that is offered within it. Members of council, I'm sure you all know that council has a responsibility to make decisions that are consistent with the intent of the town's municipal planning strategy. This refers to the strategy as a whole and not just individual pieces that may align with the proposal. The staff report presented to council and was presented on the screen today identified four of the seven objectives contained within the residential policy section. And one would agree that those four objectives seem to be fulfilled by the proposal. I would question whether or not it aligns with the remaining three, and I'll highlight one of those today. One of those is to protect the character and development form of established residential neighborhoods. I would suggest that this proposal does not in fact fulfill the intent of this objective, especially when you consider that council has a responsibility to contemplate the fullest build-out of these properties within the zone that's being contemplated, which Kristin has already pointed out, could be hundreds of units on the R4 property. I also want to point out the RS 23 policy, which has already been brought up by other speakers. The staff report suggests that this proposal fulfills the intent of this policy, which I disagree with. It is not clear when it says, it shall be the intent of council to ensure that new residential areas, blank, you know, provide for the efficient use of land, et cetera. What is the definition of a new residential area? Is council in, and does the municipal planning strategy suggest that one parcel of land is a new residential area because that's what's being proposed? I would suggest that council should be considering the impacts of development on a much larger scale than at the individual property level, especially when this property is surrounded by tracts, large tracts of undeveloped land, which staff referred to tonight as bulk land designated for residential development. If this area is well-planned, it has the potential to be an extension of our community that we can all be proud of. Comprehensive planning must be undertaken before development proposals are needs, economic growth, transportation, existing and future land uses, and the public infrastructure required to support them. Because comprehensive planning has not been conducted for this area of the town, it is not clear what the most desirable land use mix is. What is the appropriate density for these areas? How do we best achieve effective active transportation for this area in a way that is connected and makes sense? What size should the water and sewer pipes be to ensure the long-term sustainability of the service extensions? Not just what's good for this property, what's good for this area? Basically, council is not in a position to determine the most efficient use of land and infrastructure without considering the larger area within which this property is located. One section of the municipal planning strategy that wasn't considered in this staff report, to my knowledge, but in my opinion is extremely relevant to this application, is section 5.2.2.5. The section containing policies for the R5 large lot residential zone within which the land is currently located, the zone within which is currently located. The preamble of this policy states that this area of the town contains several large tracts of land that are not serviced and that are, for which there are no immediate plans to develop. So it sounds like council wrote this policy at a time when growth was not an immediate concern, and it sounds like council's intention is not in line with what this developer is Municipal planning strategy does not provide any guidance on when or if these lands should be developed. It is void of policy that would suggest that this, if and when these lands should be developed. I would argue that this lack of policy direction that should compel council to deem this application premature and inappropriate until such time as comprehensive planning can be conducted for this area, so that development is not allowed to happen in an ad hoc, one-off fashion at the expense of our community. Planning must come before development, and site plan approval is not planning. I also want to, you know, we all know that our province and our town is in a housing crisis, but we need to increase the housing stock. But let's not let building housing come at the expense of building community. Thank you very much.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Kate Bowser. I live at 26 Mount Vincent Drive, and this application affects the community of McDougal Heights where I reside. Having reviewed the associated public record, I do not believe that this application sufficiently has sufficiently provided information to fulfill policies IM7 and IMA. As a disabled resident of Kentville, I would also ask council to consider policy P11. My primary concern is the safety of pedestrians and cyclists, many of whom are children, and the impacts increased traffic will have on the community. I take frequent walks with my servant dog along Canyon Drive, needing a power wheelchair. Due to the lack of sidewalk, I must travel against traffic on the roadway. And when there are cars parked on the road, as there frequently are in good weather, I must go further into the line of traffic. I share the concerns raised by Carolyn Robinson, ten of CND Community Design, regarding the traffic impact study that was conducted. Furthermore, that study was conducted on a school day, during school hours, and I would invite council to commission a new traffic impact study that takes place during the summer months to gain an accurate depiction of what pedestrian activity is like in the community, because I do not feel the traffic impact study that was conducted clearly does I would also like to raise a policy matter. I believe it is a mistake not to include a requirement in the MPS or LPW policy for rezoning applications to demonstrate that sufficient infrastructure, such as sidewalks, exists. Presently, the developer only has to abide by that regulatory requirement when they submit a subdivision by law application. That process occurs after rezoning has been approved. I would also like to note that engineers had said that although the developer will be responsible for creating a sidewalk through the new portion of Acadia's development on Acadia Drive, I believe that council should consider making the developer responsible for the cost of producing a sidewalk within the existing community if the rezoning and subdivision by law applications go through. And even if council decides not to approve this rezoning application, which I believe that council should consider the financial implications of putting in the sidewalk anyway for safety reasons. I urge council to reject this application at second reading. Thank you.
That concludes our registered speakers. At this time, we are going to hear from CEO Trump, who's going to provide us with kind of a brief summary of the written comments that we've already received to date. And then, once that concludes, we'll do a public comment period. So if you are here and you didn't register to speak, but now you want to, we'll provide for that after we hear from CEO Trump.
Thank you very much. So first and foremost, for folks, once again, I'll repeat, if you have put a submission in during the last number of months, they've all been logged and registered, and council has access to all of that information. But what I wanted to do is just kind of give a very quick overview. We did receive 54 written submissions. Five of those were in support, 49 were not supporting. The general themes that were identified in these written submissions, and this is not specifically in order, but these are the general themes in which we saw. So concerns with regards to traffic, safety, stormwater, water, noise, school facilities, property values, density, sidewalks, and green space. So what I would say is that's just a very high-level overview, but for those folks who have submitted written comments, that's not precluding you from speaking tonight, but I would also encourage anybody who hasn't had the opportunity to comment and you wish to do so. Maybe we give folks the room to come up first, to be able to provide their comments, and then, should that number begin to go down, then anybody who has submitted, if you do want to add anything to that submission or anything, please come up at that point. So that's just a few short comments.
Thanks, Neil. Okay, so if there's anyone here who would like to speak, come up to the microphone, tell us your name, make sure that you've signed in on the sign-in sheets, we have a record of you, and I'll be timing you.
Sorry, let's see, I have to turn my phone because that's my announcer.
Oh, that's okay.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Excuse me. My name is Wayne Smith. I'll have to get the voice working, sitting there, not talking for a while. I live on 31 Fielding Avenue in Kentville. Few comments. The Galco Traffic Engineering Report does not put enough emphasis on the traffic of pedestrians to and from the proposed development area that would use Palmer Avenue, Grant Street, and McDonald Park Road. They don't even, Palmer doesn't even show up on the map. Grant doesn't show up on the map. Why do I say this? Picture someone coming home from Kentville, and they come up to Palmer Street, and they're going up to McDonald Park Road. Are they going to go straight to Acadia and up Acadia, and then Dell Housing up that way, or are they going to turn left on Park, on Palmer? They're going to turn left on Palmer because it's shorter. McDonald, sorry, Palmer, Grant, McDonald Park. It's shorter. Traffic will always take the shortest route. I'm the son who lives in Sackville, wonderful development, and I could build the main road to get to his house, but no, like everybody else, I cut through a subdivision. They put in traffic bunks or go a foot and a half high now because they find it's slow people lay on. People always take the shortest route. As stated in the comments section on Schedule BE, Evaluation Criteria for Rezoning Policy IM9, once a land is rezoned R4 based on the size of the lot, 18.78 acres, as was stated earlier, on that R4 lot, they could put 816 units. And the developer is going to want to put 816 units. They're going to get bigger return on their investment. You're showing a six-story building. If they come back a year from now, two years from now and say, "Look, let's change the plan. It's not a six-story building. Let's make it eight, let's make it 10." I don't think there's anything to stop them from doing that. I don't think there's a height limit on buildings in Kentville. Maybe there is, but I don't think there is. And it was a really good presentation tonight, good information from other people, so a few of these notes are no longer significant. Children from the proposed new development will not use Acadia Drive predominantly to get to school. They live up on McDonald Park right now. They go McDonald Park, Dell Housing, and then they take the St. Mary's Court, and they jump over to Duncan, then they get down to school. And if they're coming from Kentville again, they're going to walk up to Park Street to Palmer, turn left, go up Palmer's, Grant, walk up Grant, McDonald Park, so on and so forth. So the traffic study and the pedestrian study is poorly done. There's, nobody knows, or there's no indication that the studiers know, in fact, the pedestrian routes or the traffic routes in town. I think grouping this R4 with the proposed R1, R2 zones, in fact, unnecessarily complicates their application at this time. I know the intent, it's a big package, there's a lot of opportunity, and yes, we want it all in Kentville, but do we really want, you know, 816 R4 units at this point in time at the top of a very busy subdivision? It's very debatable. The developer, you know, if you, I would suggest that we refuse or decline, or that's not very important, reject the proposal as submitted and ask that they resubmit. With the R1 and the R2 at this time, I'm sure that will be approved quite quickly, and the R4 becomes a future application after things like, you know, the Harrington Road extension from Prospect, sorry, the new road from Prospect to Harrington Road. And that's pretty much everything I had to say. I did send an email today, so I know the council just had my notes. I submitted them yesterday late, but I don't think that should be any reason why they're not included in the summary in the future. Thank you.
A little taller, I guess. Hi, my name's Kim. I live on 54 McDonald Park Road, and I'm so concerned about the stormwater situation. We are one of the homes that has the storm drain beside our home that floods consistently. I have pleaded with this town for years to address this problem. This problem has started since you have connected McDonald Park to McDougal Heights. I've lived there for 23 years. As you expand and you develop more subdivisions, our infrastructure is not addressed. The road, McDonald Park Road, from Grant Street up is a mess. There's water gushing out of the streets at any given time. When are we going to address these issues before we bring in more homes and more people? I have made several pleas to our town about the traffic on McDonald Park Road now. There are buses that stop where traffic is going straight through. I am very concerned for our children. When I bought our home, it was a cool design. That is why we purchased that home, because we wanted our children to grow up in a safe neighborhood. It's not safe right now. Every day, I watch from my front window as traffic flies across my street up to Acadia Drive. I've asked for stop signs. I've asked for children playing. You've never addressed any of it. I am in proposal that will deny this. Thank you.
Thanks to staff and council for attending this evening to hear our concerns, and for all the community members that showed up. It's great. I've learned, living in the west end of town, one of the outcomes of the past 20 years is public speaking and letter writing. My name's Nancy Acker, and I live at 44 Mount Vincent Drive. That's the street along with Kim's, apparently that's in competition with Miners Marsh for water runoff. To begin, I'm very pro-development. Development benefits all citizens in our town. I am not, however, in favor of rezoning PID 55247761. Hope I've got that right, or they're going to develop something else. To include a mix of R1, R2, and R4. A portion of this parcel of land is old growth forest with stately hemlock and pine. We speak of saving and protecting our old growth forest from disease, yet a proposal to rezoning results in the clear cutting of these trees we covet. Once these spaces are developed, they're gone forever. For current and future residents of the town of Kentville, our elected should consider purchasing these small parcels of land from private landowners to ensure there will be an abundance of natural green spaces moving forward, given the area that we saw tonight on the map for proposed development. Posteach-damp-sized pieces being offered up as a part of development proposal is very short-sighted. Mount Vincent Drive is the first area to feel the impact of water runoff. We also have a lot of traffic that zooms up and down our street every day, even in the middle of the night. There is a major water issue going on with runoff as well as underground springs. This is not new to this parcel of land. Stormwater management and general water runoff will increase as land is cleared behind and above, and it's already happening. I too, along with Mr. Bowser, have been out in the rain digging ditches to keep rainwater off my property, or stormwater, sorry. Who loves a derby? There are several red flags in the CND planning report, of which stormwater management is only one. I have and will allow others, far more versed than these shortfalls who have already been up here before me, to address them this evening, such as Mike and Suzanne and the others. These shortfalls are definitely red flags and a strong reason why council should not support the proposed rezoning as presented. The need for housing currently is a strong driver for development, but should not be the sole reason our representatives on council should base the decision for this rezoning proposal. It is disheartening as resident to hear statements such as this before the citizens even have had an opportunity to voice their thoughts. As a resident, to me, it feels like a David and Goliath situation, and my wish as a resident is that our voices be heard by those that represent us, with the key word being "represent." This is assured there is a shortage of housing in our province, but drilled down and at points also to a lack of affordable housing. I am concerned, should this rezoning occur, will R1 and R2 become rental properties? In the proposal, there are several R2 units directly backing on R1, specifically on Mount Vincent Drive and Acadia, with very little, if any, buffer between the existing R1 and proposed R2. My house is one of those. My house is one of those. It may not affect my assessed value, but it certainly will affect my resale value. Our town requires a strong vision for the future mapped out by professional planners. A review of our existing infrastructure is a must, first step to decide if heavy-density development will burden a system that is already close to forty-plus years old. It's a cycle of developing to collect new tax dollars and using those tax dollars to maintain existing well-used infrastructure. It's time to break this cycle and try another approach, applying due diligence before turning saw. Thank you.
Thanks everyone so far. Just before we go to the next speaker, is there anyone in here who has not submitted commentary already through other channels that would like to speak now? If you haven't already submitted and you'd like to speak, thank you.
Thank you for the opportunity. My name is Bill Blagden and I live on three Acadia Drive. I get to look at all the traffic coming in and out. All the little boys and girls walking in and out. It's already a dangerous spot with no sidewalk. Increase the traffic significantly, you're waiting for a disaster to happen. I'd rather not have to see that in front of my house. Thank you.
Hello, thank you mayor and council and staff for the opportunity to speak. My name is Sherry Donovan. I live at forty-one Feeling Avenue, which is on the periphery of things. But I felt it prudent that I come and speak today. Um, I'd like to start by saying that we moved here not even a year ago. So I'm brand new to the community, uh, from Fort McMurray, Alberta. So I was one of the evacuees in the twenty-sixteen wildfire. So your comment was very, very critical to address. So the, um, building of that connector road, to me, is critical in the, in the whole planning phase. Um, but I wanted to say I'm also pro-development and pro-progression. But you can't focus just on housing alone. Infrastructure amenities must be considered to support growth. With that in mind, I bring forward the two concerns that I would have. Efficient and effective, a safe movement of pedestrians and cyclists. This is a walking community. So I came from Fort McMurray where it's winter twelve months of the year. And you didn't see very many people out. When I moved here, I couldn't believe how many people walk. And so from seniors to small children, it's a delight to see everyone out. According to the executive summary of the May thirtieth council meeting minutes, it said there was a significant number of pedestrians, both adults and children, walking on the South Lake of both Duncan Avenue and Palmer intersections. Uh, fewer on Acadia Drive. As there are no sidewalks, most pedestrians walk on the grass shoulder of the street, although a few did walk on the pavement. Um, I'm sure a lot of you have seen me walking with my dogs, little Bennies, only three pounds. Um, so we walk that route daily and I challenge this statement. Very few people walk on the grass shoulder. Most people walk on the street as they're in an available sidewalks. Given the new development proposed is to include thirty-two R one lots, a hundred and twelve units, and two-hundred-and-fifty-six units as part of R four, it's my opinion that the town of Kentville should look at a sidewalk plan beyond just the new section of Acadia Drive, which is what is currently proposed, um, so that people in the entire community have a safe place to walk. This is a requirement that in fact precedes the new development being inhabited. Long before anyone puts up curtains or sets out their lawn furniture, large trucks will be descending upon the sites with materials, supplies, and equipment. What route will these trucks take? What hours will they keep? It would be remiss of council not to consider the impact of construction noise, pollution, and safety of the residents of the adjacent community, especially factoring in the safety of the walking and cycling community, who again are forced to take to the streets as no sidewalks are available. As per the reports submitted by C and D communities design, they do not consider the requirement of the love MPS for traffic study satisfied. I wholeheartedly agree that this needs to be revisited. Again, the efficient and safe movement of pedestrians and cyclists in mind, I would like to address the transportation plan that can accommodate four thousand, four hundred new residents. Multi-unit housing in an area outside of town will undoubtedly require a transportation plan. Ideally, in a perfect world, the opposite would happen. You'd grow density around transit, transit-oriented development. Residents who have access to jobs, retail, and other services would require public transit. Transit is useless if people don't live near it, so suffice to say, it may be a requirement for the new development. As such, is there a plan around this? So far in what I've read, concerns from Acadia Drive residents have been voiced in the September twenty-seventh public information meeting, but I've yet to see any comments to address these concerns. And then my second, oh, sorry, impact on school facilities. Um, in the notes, it said that there would be no impact to the school. But right now, um, it's saying by twenty-twenty-seven, the school will be at capacity. And the library is currently being housed in a portable. So is there a planned place for new, the new people residing here to be accommodated at KCA and the, and the high school? I'd like to thank mayor and council for giving the McDougal Heights residents an opportunity to speak and voice our concerns. We appreciate that, we appreciate all that you do and have faith that you will take these concerns under serious advisement and that you will move forward with a decision that is safe and healthy for a progressive, sustainable, and thriving town in Kentville. Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Gordon Wendy. I've lived at seventeen Acadia Drive for the last twenty-eight years. And things have changed. I wrote a letter to town council on November seventeenth to the mayor and each councillor, expressing my concern regarding this rezoning. The areas I touched on was the volume of traffic, pedestrian safety, property depreciation, connector road, infrastructure support for future development, and the level of town council involvement. I read the tri-government announcement about the major expenditures, which addressed the three areas of major concern was infrastructure, water supply, and, well, I forget that one. But one thing it didn't mention was the Hiltz Connector. And to me, the Hiltz Connector is the integral part of this whole development. I think it would be somewhat criminal to use Acadia Drive to feed the outlined areas beyond Acadia Drive, to the south side of Acadia Drive. To the people that have come and invested in our town, in the properties, in the McDougal Heights subdivision, I don't think we should make them bear the inconvenience of all the extra traffic. I know full well the problem of storm sewer problems. I had a, a lot of erosion going on next to my property and the town got around to fixing it after considerable months of pleading. I think I heard tonight that we have a zoning issue and we have a subdivision issue. And the two are separate. To me, the situation is that the zoning should not be considered until the town really looks at what they are going to do with the Hiltz Connector. To me, that's the artery that really feeds the entire area to the south side of the current town. Once that is looked at and a global plan developed, then come back and start looking at how the subdivisions can be developed. And then I think is where I rest my case, is I really plead with town not to use Acadia Drive as an artery to feed the line ions, to expedite the work on the Hiltz Connector, which by the way, I was part and parcel of dealing land to the town back in the nineteen nineties. So it's been on the books for a long time. And getting that established, getting the infrastructure in place that would support new development, prior to having to come back and have the development and then trying to push the infrastructure. So I would request that council deny this appeal or at least table it until a more global plan can be developed. Thank you.
Hello, council and mayor. My name is Aaron Maskins. I live at forty-six Acadia Drive. Uh, just, just moved to the area last July. We had come from a city and, you know, coming into Kentville. I'm totally unfamiliar with the area, um, you know, it wasn't very fresh air. Very, um, refreshing, very, uh, I just walked around the city, where the town is. I walked downtown and spoke to people on Acadia, uh, just to find out what the area was like. And everyone said it was great, it was, you know, calm, kids were everywhere, kids were playing. Um, so I thought I'd, you know, kind of hit the jackpot as a, as a dad. Um, I had no idea this kind of zoning, rezoning stuff was happening in the background. I would have liked to have known, um, because I might have, uh, changed what I would have, what I ended up doing. Needless to say, um, I am also realistic, you know, I'm not against development. I realize that, you know, Canada's grown up to forty million now and a million migrants last year. So I know people tend to go off towards bigger cities and none of this spills over here. Um, but, um, uh, you know, knee-jerk reactions aren't a good thing. And, um, just, uh, just, I'm hoping that they're proper planning and everything is going to place. Um, I had a lot of concerns with the, uh, with the traffic study, as was shared, that, uh, it occurred during school hours when there was, uh, you know, kind of after people would have gone to work, um, that kind of thing. Um, so I kind of wanted to just fill in a little bit of the blanks. Got down to four kids at age four to nine. You know, they have, they have school, they have piano lessons, they ride their bikes, they have soccer practice, there's water gun flights, there's Nerf gun fights, there's basketball, bike jumps on the road. Um, you know, the kids are on the street. Um, definitely echoing what, uh, my neighbor, uh, before you had Academy, Mike was saying, uh, you know, the street is where the kids meet to play. Um, so it's very common from, you know, see kids going from house to house, seeing who's around to play. Um, uh, they're going, um, weekends, no after-school. Um, and, you know, if this, this development goes ahead, I don't know how many more cars will be on the street or buses or whatever, but, um, I assume it'll be, you know, a couple hundred at least going, you know, to and from work and all that. So, um, the lack of a sidewalk on Acadia is a concern. Um, uh, I, if anything does, you know, if this goes forward, I sincerely hope that some kind of sidewalk, some kind of traffic control measures are put, would be put in place. But I really urge council that, uh, the way it is proposed today, um, that it would, that you would reject it as is. And, um, yeah, I'm just two-year-old with my family and, um, my kids are concerned for their safety. Thanks.
Hello, I'm Gary Cleveland, twenty-five Acadia Drive. I've lived in that subdivision now sixteen years, but in the greater subdivision, about sixty. So I've seen a lot of development. It's all been residential, all's gone very well, good tax base for the town. And, uh, as I talked to the new people who moved in, they were all, I believe, all single dwelling, single dwelling, same. So they get their sales, all of a sudden, bang, that's over. Uh, and I'm not against, um, development and especially single development that our town can handle. I, just a couple things, I, I can't see how, if now our pipes won't handle the water that's running down Park Street, up through the wall park, go through there, how if we add four hundred more homes or dwellings, I guess, for people, that, uh, that we can handle that. You know, you're down by Mr. Gerard's property and you can show the kids the water pipe can go every once in a while. You know, the water just doesn't, doesn't handle it. And I know, um, up on, off of Acadia, Saint, healthy. Yeah, your town. Then, you know, there's just a stream of water running down. So, so we haven't got, and can you imagine if we're cutting out much more, what's gonna happen? Not for that. I just mentioned connector road. Well, the connector road, very important and it'd be great. But a connector road to nowhere. We connect it onto Prospect Street. If you drive across Prospect Street from the water tower down. I mean, can you imagine running a bunch of traffic there? They just won't go. Then the next is we go up to the, uh, industrial park. Well, then everything there is, you know, like, like, it's not a connector, as we would know, a connector. We'd have to get Chester Avenue so we can get onto the one-on-one shortly. And next, we'd have to get onto the one-on-one, not through the industrial park. Uh, I'm sorry, that doesn't work. We call it a connector road, but it really isn't. So people will take the easiest route. They'll be traveling down Acadia, down McDonald's, and those. And just quickly onto the traffic study. Well, this day and age with electronics, we could really do a traffic study. Instead of a guy sitting down there in a little white car with a pencil on the paper, knocking that down and then going home. You know, like, like that's basically it. And, um, I don't know what else to say, except, except they're, they're talking on apartments, housing. Well, I've noticed in the last month, two months, for rent, for rent, for rent. We didn't see that for two years. And, uh, now we're starting to see it. And the real development for apartments, they should do like they did down at the east end of town. Grab a little piece of area, build it there. Everybody knows it's apartments, it's not. You know, we do have about two-hundred-and-fifty acres west of Acadia Drive. West of Acadia Drive, held as far as the industrial park. Over two-hundred with, with one factory in the middle. But there is two-hundred-and-fifty acres, lots of room. Buy some land there, do what they want with it. Do an approach on our neighborhood. Thank you.
Good evening, Lieutenant Mayor, councillors, neighbors. You'll be okay. My name is Ian Verine Stewart. I live on the corner of Alicia and Kerman Drive, fifty-two Kerman Drive, it's like a fork in the road. Lived there thirty-seven years. I have watched over the years the amount of traffic gradually increasing at speeds which is often frightening. If you go into our neighborhood right now, you will see dozens of people out for an evening walk with kids, with strollers, kids on bicycles, walking dogs. I challenge you to stand on the corner where I live in the mornings and watch the kids come down on their way to school. They're all over the road. Kids are kids, right? The kids on bikes, the kids are running, and those little boys on those little scooters, they go down at frightening speeds. Like most people here, I am not, I don't object to development in this area. But four hundred dwellings, somewhere in the country, there are statistics as to how many people that will generate. How many automobiles and how many kids, I don't know. Suffice it to say, lots. And I will support what everybody has said so far. We have no sidewalks. And I don't believe that it's gonna be planned in this neighborhood, and that is absolutely unacceptable. And I would urge council to think long and hard before approving rezoning for R four and for R two. Thank you.
Uh, good evening, my name's Benjamin Cordenz. I live at eighty-eight Grand Street. So for- meeting, it is important that we address issues with the bylaws before the rezoning, because if we address them after the rezoning, the developer will have already begun building their, creating their development plans, they will have already started investing in their development plans, and they will very likely complain that we have changed the rules on them after we approved the rezoning. So I'm also going to echo one thing, stormwater, I also had to dig a ditch in our backyard to avoid flooding. And then move on to traffic calming. So, as others have said, the traffic study wasn't, really wasn't done very well. But, a lot of people have been out here talking about sidewalks, but I think that just focusing on sidewalks is quite a mistake, because sidewalks don't slow down cars. If you just move the people off the street, you're not actually going to make the streets that much safer, because as the previous gentleman mentioned, children don't necessarily play on sidewalks. Just moving the people who walk on sidewalks will mean that the cyclists will still likely be on the street, or if they're like me, bike on the sidewalk, because the streets aren't safe. Drivers are already speeding from stop sign to stop sign, they're already failing to slow down when they pass pedestrians and cyclists. They fly down those hills. Dappozie Street is extremely wide and straight, and everybody flies down that hill around that corner. Before we begin to add new traffic, we should be amending our bylaws to require traffic calming measures being put in place to protect the people who use the streets. Yes. There are a lot of relatively inexpensive traffic calming measures that can be put in that are semi-currented. Concrete barriers that narrow streets, speed cushions, which are wide enough to slow down cars, but narrow enough to allow firefighting vehicles and ambulances to pass over them without slowing them down. So the next issue is, the Donnelly-Filts Connector, as Gary mentioned, will not actually alleviate traffic if it doesn't connect to Chester, because everybody's going to take the shortest route, and it's going to go through Acadia or Palomar, out of the neighborhood. So without actually provisioning for getting to the highway, you're not necessarily going to actually keep the people, keep the traffic off the streets. The developer mentioned that that was the intention of the connector, but that will not be the real use of the connector. The connector will get very little use, and it'll be a street that not very many people drive on. Finally, the developer talks a good game about the changes to the way people are starting to think about development, the need for the missing middle, and the idea that we should start to build more densely, just both for sustainability reasons, but also for things like walkability and active transit. Now, as I mentioned, I live at the end of Grand Street. It is not a twenty-minute walk to downtown, just pleasant walk, that you would have to really power walk to get downtown in twenty minutes. So these new buildings are going to be at least a thirty-minute walk from downtown, which is really not sufficient for, if your intention is for the neighborhood to be walkable. So all of this new residents would have no real destinations for themselves to go to, there's no plans for proper parks, there's no plans for any other forms of recreation, there's no plans for things such as corner bakeries or anything like that. I moved here from Guelph five years ago, and when we lived in Guelph, it was a five-minute walk down the road, four hour, to get to a bakery. And these are things that, having small amenities in the neighborhood make it more walkable, and especially if there's big plans to build across from the connector down on the south side, having everybody just funneling downtown is just going to mean that everybody's going to drive downtown. Everybody's going to, which means there's going to be more traffic downtown, more parking downtown, and it's not really planning for a mixed-use, walkable future that is envisioned by other parts of the MPS and the active transit plan. And finally, there's the Newport Water Course, which has really promising potential as a hikeable trail, like the gorge, but there are no current provisions for that to be a walkable, hikeable place in any of the developers' plans. Thank you.
Just so we can gauge whether or not we're going to take a recess or not, if you're intending to speak, can you raise your hand, so we can see if we might need to take a break at some point?
Sure. Mayor, council. Hi, I'm just, my name's Kate Tullavon, Acadia Drive, just moved in the end of January. So I'm very new, had no idea of any of the concerns that were brought forth about the rezoning. My concern is, has been mentioned by many others, and I'm going to reiterate, safe travel. As I know the mayor too, is active runs, and it's very nice to be able to run down the side of a road, not get hit. Well, let me tell you, I've run up and down Acadia Drive many a times, and the speed that people have gone up and down that road has been more than fifty kilometers. If it goes to the top with the rezoning, the speed of the cars coming from the top's going to be fast. And, as people have mentioned, there's children. Children know that they should not be playing in the streets, they're told by their parents, let's be safe. Well, children are children, and if your ball rolls into the middle of the street, where do you go? You go chase it. I love seeing all the children, you hear the laughter, you hear them having fun, it's great. When you are increasing the amount of people who are going to be living at the top, they're saying up to four hundred, let's say there's going to be more than two hundred cars, they're going to come down Acadia Drive. That and on top of it is going to affect the drives, that's going to affect the road. There's an infrastructure problem right there, even not even having a sidewalk, you're going to have potholes, and we're going to be living Park Street, 101. The other concern I have is the water. The backyard of my house, I think the ducks like to live in there, and you could probably put a surfboard on and go surfing through the back, about the runoff. If there's more clearcutting above, there's going to be more stormwater, there's going to be more runoff, there's going to be more water problems. People are not going to be able to develop anymore. It's a really big concern, but I just want to leave this one point, it's great that we want to have more homes because of this housing crisis, but I have to tell you, one child, one person, who gets injured, that nullifies this whole thing. Thank you.
We're going to break right after you.
Good evening, everyone. My name's Jessica Van Luxemburg. I live on Kerman Drive, at the bottom of Kerman Drive. So those students that are quick at the top of Kerman, they get something to do, and they get to live on, and they are fun to watch. Kerman is a very narrow street, all our older subdivisions have narrow streets, but we are a community, and we're a community to take care of each other. So to increase pedestrians and traffic flow, to me, is very delicate. So I really urge you about no on this rezoning, and I don't understand why the dump trucks and the Kent moving trucks drive up Kerman, I'm not sure where they're going, we don't have development on Kerman, but they're going somewhere. So traffic is taking a very quick route, or what they think is a quick route, and our roads are in very poor condition as it is. So I don't know, I'm for development, but I would really like to see our current situation maintained. Yeah, it's for the kids, I worry about the kids, pedestrians, those kids grow up, they turn sixteen, they don't drive slow, I'd like to think they drive slow, but they don't drive slow. So yeah, that would be yes. Thank you.
Thanks, everybody, that's been great so far. We're going to take a five-minute recess, just so people can get a breather, maybe run to the bathroom, do what you need to do, and we'll call you back here very momentarily.[1170.57]
We're good.
My name is Ed Himsel, 30 Delphos in Kentville. Just a short comment here. I don't think Kentville is ready for this development and I think we're a long way from seeing this thing being approved. And another comment I'd like to make is that all our doctors and dentists are publicly rated. I think we should do the same for our developers. Thank you.
Hi, Bruce Blackbeef, 75 with Donald Kerr. Just a couple of quick comments. Maybe we should be not naming that Donald Hills Connector Road, but Donald Hills Distributor Road because all the track that goes through that will have to come somewhere. So anybody that lives in Prospect Road area, Academy Street, that sort of thing, if they want to go west, they'll go along Donald Hills, not through the industrial park, down Acadia Drive and up. So it's pretty rare traffic, but not just traffic from the area. And as far as sidewalks though, I'm not a big fan of sidewalks. I think subdivisions should be designed with streets that encourage children to play on the streets and encourage people to walk on the streets as public areas and have calm traffic so they're safe on the streets. In that way, we have a true neighborhood. If we just have streets that take courage somewhere quickly and have everybody on the sidewalk not engaged, that's not a community, that's just a mass of people. So I encourage calm streets, children playing on the streets, and connector roads that connect some things to something. Maybe Donald Hills Connector Road should have a designated artery from that down to the number one highway that does not change subdivision so that this traffic is actually stays on a traffic-designed street, not a subdivision street. Thank you.
Can you guys hear me okay? All right. My name is Megan, I'm a resident here in the town of Kentville. I'd like to start by saying that today is National Indigenous Peoples' Day. I'd like to acknowledge that we are in Mi'kmaq, the ancestral and ancestral territory of the Mi'kmaq people, and acknowledging this traditional and ancestral territory is a way of showing respect for and honoring our shared treaty relationship.
... and municipal planning. Trying to force change without proper consideration for a long-term, stable plan with guaranteed protection for all areas implicated such as residential, social, schooling, healthcare, economics, business, environment, and conservation only diminishes the objective of trying to build a resilient town. We agree that we need housing and we agree that this land provides the town with an opportunity to grow. We acknowledge that it will and should be developed, but how it develops needs to be thought through with proper planning. Can council confidently say that this proposal meets all the requirements under the MPS to rezone for density of this degree and absorb the expected and unexpected infrastructure, social, and economic outcomes? The proposed density of this rezoning is of a nature unprecedented to this current council. We are talking high density, which brings with it critical policy considerations. To promote accessibility and sustainability, high-density developments should be located within walking or cycling distance to essential services such as healthcare, schools, and grocery stores. This helps reduce reliance on private vehicles, which can contribute to congestion and pollution. Page 21 of our active transportation plan contains a cashman area map detailing the distance from certain areas of town to town hall. In that map, Halter and Duncan subdivision roads are green, which indicates that it is a 30-minute walk to Town Hall. McDougall Heights roads and over indicate a 30-minute bike ride to Town Hall. The proposed rezoning would place these units at four kilometers from the downtown core in approximately 40-minute walk one way. Currently, the closest bus stop is access at 384 Park Street, which is a 1.5 or 20-minute walk up and down Acadia Drive, which does not currently meet the accessibility standards under the town's active transportation plan due to the steep slope on one section of the road, as well as no sidewalks to ensure safety of pedestrians. There is a void of direction in the MPS to support that this rezoning meets planning requirements within the Municipal Government Act. Another example, in addition to that, related to the R-5 zoning that Lee and Jenny's already shared tonight, I'll mention that under Policy RS12 related to the R-4 zone, it states that it shall be the intention of council to establish zone standards and permitted uses for the high-density R-4 zone in accordance with the Land Use Bylaw. These standards and permitted uses are not contained in the MPS or associated municipal bylaws. This is the case throughout the MPS where various policies are referring to the Land Use Bylaw and no policy is set. And again, under Section 5.2.2.1, Single Unit Dwelling R-1 Zone states that the R-1 Zone will foster stability within existing neighborhoods that consist of primarily single-unit dwellings by limiting the range of permitted uses within the established R-1 Zone. Council wishes to protect the character of these established neighborhoods while encouraging new, smaller, single-family dwelling lots in neighborhoods. Again, there is a void of direction in the MPS where the zone standards and permitted uses are not established and planning documents and bylaws refer back and forth like a clock pendulum. The shortcomings against Policy RS23 have been well represented by everybody else, so I won't go into that again. But one thing I do want to add is under Policy IM8, the Evaluative Criteria N requires that council have consideration that the proposal is in conformance with the intent of this strategy, i.e. the MPS, and within the requirements of all of the town bylaws and regulations. Failure to meet three of those four policies under RS23 does not, does, sorry, it does mean that the application does not conform to the intent of the MPS. As a town, look at where the appropriate place is for more development and the development of this nature that considers mixed and high-density and determine where to build. If this pit is the place, then let the town be the one to determine it with proper planning, not a developer. Planning can drive development. It's for the community to say, this is how we want this development. Take responsibility as a council and say, we're not ready. We ask that you vote no to this proposed rezoning. As a member of the public, show me that you've thought through the planning of this. What happens on this property will influence everything that happens next around it. Municipal planning decisions will impact the community for many years to come. You cannot forego proper planning at the cost of more housing. It will only cost the community immensely in the future. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Jennifer Curry and I live on Acadia Drive. Today I'm asking you to vote no on the second reading of this rezoning proposal. We appear today because several aspects of the rezoning proposal go against our current MPS. These are the areas of efficient and economic extension of existing water, storm, and sanitary sewer, providing for efficient and safe movement of pedestrians and cyclists, and providing for parks and other community uses in safe and central locations. You have been shown in great detail by CND Consulting and by my neighbors why the proposal does not meet these criteria, so I won't go into them all again. As well, Policy IM8 lists 16 evaluative criteria for rezoning. It was stated earlier that Kentville staff believe this rezoning meets all of these requirements. I urge all councils to take a closer look at those 16 criteria, as all 16 criteria are certainly not met by this proposal. As your job as mayor and councillors is to make decisions based on what the residents of Kentville want and need, I am asking that you vote against this current proposal, as it is clearly not what most residents want. Yes, we need development. Yes, the top of Acadia will be developed in some way, but all of the research presented on this specific proposal shows us that this plan is not suitable for the top of Acadia and more planning is needed before deviating so drastically from what was expected. For these reasons, I am asking you to vote no on the second reading of the rezoning application.
Hi, my name is Eleanor, I live on in the Halter subdivision. For this current rezoning proposal, I ask that council votes no. There is a need for housing, but this rezoning is not the fixer of housing crisis. The town is doing great things to bring affordable housing to fix the crisis, such as applying for the CMHC Accelerated Housing Period. Drastically rezoning to high-density seems more focused on quantity of units than the quality of life they can provide. Today's municipal planning decision will affect the community of Kentville for many years to come. The current MPS has failed points where the developer has the opportunity to take advantage of council. There has been a lot of talk and promises provided by the developer's CAO, planning department, but until it is underwriting as policy and voted on, it is all speculation and promises. There will be many more large developments like this to come in the town of Kentville. I hope that council can take this opportunity to prevent a precedent and ensure future development proceed in a way that is at the town and community's best interest, not the developers. The town has hired a third-party planner, CND Consulting. These are your selected experts in planning. These are the experts who council needs to listen to, not a housing specialist, engineer, or planning department without a planner. Council must look at how to plan the wholesome town from housing, infrastructure, recreation, safe movement of pedestrians, school, healthcare, shopping, and health interests. In the April 20 letter from CND Consulting, it clearly states that the opinion of Caroline Robertson in accordance to this proposal, she said, and I quote, "Based on the policy RS23 of the town's municipal planning strategy, I believe the application received is incomplete." She highlighted three main sections where this proposal fails the current MPS. The efficient and economic extension of utilities, the safe movement of pedestrians and cyclists, the safe and central community parks and amenities, all of which would be addressed in both the rezoning, which is now, and the subdivision application phase, which is later. Since the hired expert gave an opinion on this proposal stating that council should not accept the current application, then council should listen to the hired planner and vote no to the rezoning application. The safe movement of pedestrian and cyclist speaks loudest to my household. We have young children who enjoy walking to school and to playgrounds and to downtown shops. We do this regularly. Unfortunately, it is not safe with current infrastructure. There's a lack of traffic calming measures. Safety and cohesiveness of our community must be the highest priority. Should the high-density rezoning come, there will be an additional 800 units in our 400-unit neighborhood. This will increase the flow of traffic on Acadia Drive, but also on other access points to the neighborhood such as Duncan Ave. and Halter Ave. There has not been any supplemental information to address the increase in traffic and safe movement of pedestrians and cyclists on these highly-used secondary streets. The town and residents as a wholesome community has not been considered. This is the wrong location for this endeavor. I ask that council vote no on the rezoning application.
Thanks everyone, we're going to keep rolling. Just a reminder that comments about competencies of staff or the developer are not welcome, so just keep it to what you're trying to say without evaluating their abilities, please and thank you.
Thank you. David Ackert, 44, Mount Finson. I have a correspondent saying that I'm against this proposal as it stands now. I did send some emails earlier to each councillor. One called back, thank you. One ignored, and the other said they'd get back to me. The rest of all said they've engaged, there was emails back. They said they were waiting for a professional plan. We went out and hired a third-party to do that because we don't have a planner, and the planner said this is insufficient. So to me, if I was a party whip, that's five no's and two meetings. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Bonnie Bennett, and I live on Conde. I'd like to talk about water. Water is fun in our bathtub. The kids can play out at the beach, go out on their speedboats. But I guarantee you, when you live on a lower street like I do, and we had, a couple of years ago, we had flooding. I get very nervous of a water coming from up above if things are clear, trees. By the way, the deer love to live on everyone's properties because where else are they going to live? Everything from Colebrook Inn has all been clear-cut for car debris, housing, et cetera. So instead, they graze through my costas and the stillbeens all day. But the poor things have to somewhere to go. Anyway, when I heard of this development, I, like others, am for development. We need it as a town to grow and to be successful. But it makes me really nervous when it's up above me. And I don't like all the clear-cutting. Trees keep our air clean and clear. There should be places for our children to play in subdivisions. We're killing a growing thing. I'm not a tree hugger, in a way, but in another way I am. I worry about our environment, and I think that these things should be considered before we do permanent damage to what we have now. Okay, so thank you for your time.
My name's Gary Randall, I live on the School Street, and I've lived there for 20-some years now. Small, and I hear most of you will say, you're already around 25 years, you're getting your subdivision or so, but I got a neighbor on the School Street, Ron Cousins, right back there, almost in the corner next to Jim Morton, who you probably know better. Ron has a piece of property, and the reason I guess I got up here, you keep talking about the Hills Connector, the Hills Connector, like, let's get the Hills Connector going through there. Ron is the only holder that stops the Hills Connector from going through. And you may want to gang up on him right away, but I could just hold off a little bit here. First, Ron's little piece of property that the town wanted, over an acre and a half, bigger than three-quarters, I think the engineer confirmed today.
Gary, I'm going to, I'm going to ask you to put your comments to the rezoning. The Donald Hills is not under discussion tonight. No, it is not.
Okay, all right, sorry about that.
No, that's okay.
You can talk to me later if you want to, but it's part of the Hills Connector.
Thank you.
My name is Julia Russell, I live on Delhousie Avenue. My family moved to Kentville in 2019. I'm very, very introverted, so this is very painful for me. Sorry. My family moved to Delhousie in 2019, and we really love Kentville and the quiet neighborhood of McDougall Heights. We moved from a neighborhood that was 70 Tash and row homes, and we enjoyed that neighborhood for 10 years until it was rezoned to a high-residential R-4 neighborhood. We had apartment buildings similar to what is being proposed built next to our street, and we were reassured that it would not impact our neighborhood. Within a year, every home on our neighborhood street had flooding in our basement, and we had a very hard time proving that it was linked to the development. I'm very highly opposed to the rezoning of this neighborhood. I don't think you can predict the impact of what that construction will do to McDougall Heights. I also feel that there are many comparisons that could be made to other neighborhoods to show the impact of apartment buildings being built next to connector streets with single homes. I don't think it is a good fit. Sorry. I don't feel it is consistent with the surrounding areas, and I feel that these apartments will interfere with the existing neighborhood. Thank you.
At this time, having nobody coming forward, I'm going to do three calls, three last calls. If you haven't spoken and you would like a chance to speak to council about the rezoning application in front of them, please come up now, and we'll give you your five minutes over here, okay?
My name's Ron Cousins. Apparently, I can't talk about what I want to talk about, but I will talk about something else I did want to talk about that we've all been talking about here tonight. Water runs downhill, and when you cut the trees down, and they want to cut some down where I live, where my woodlot is, there's going to be more water coming down. They've all mentioned the water problems you're having in the subdivision, and I just want that added to that. Yeah, there's going to be a lot of water coming down, and I think a lot of speakers have said that tonight, so. And, okay, thank you.
Good evening. My name is Gordon Rosella, I live at 21 Acadia Drive. There's been a lot of amazing comments made here tonight, and I hope you'd certainly take them into consideration. Most of what's been talked about, what I want to talk about, has already been covered, but there's a few more specific points, I guess, I'd like to raise. Sidewalks, I believe I read in one of the reports that the developer is going to be responsible for putting in sidewalks in the newer section of Acadia Drive. I guess I'm not understanding why they wouldn't be responsible for putting in sidewalks the entire length, because with all the additional traffic you're going to have, you certainly need to have sidewalks the full length of that street. I can also see with the extra traffic, issues with people trying to get from Acadia Drive onto Park Avenue, especially during rush hour, especially in the morning. I would hope that you'd be considering maybe putting a three-way stop in there. I think it could serve another purpose as well, and that's to get speeds, people to slow down coming, who are coming from, say, the direction of Colebrook, because there's a school there, and I think that having a three-way stop there would help with slowing people down.
that maybe just didn't get a chance to say everything they wanted to say, but it summarizes a lot of what's already been spoken about, but a few more points. As a town, we look at where the appropriate place is for more development and development of this nature that considers mixed and high-density and determine where to build. If this is the place, then let the town be the one to determine it with proper planning, not a developer. Planning can drive development. It's for the community to say, this is how we want this development. Take responsibility as council and say, we're not ready. The developer will still be there. The demand on housing isn't going anywhere. This is the time to do comprehensive planning. Study the topography, water dynamics, elevation, determine where parkland is needed, and how to build out proper infrastructure beyond one-off developments. Since this application was put forward, we've heard lots of ideas from residents, councils, and staff. We could put sidewalks here. We could plan for parks here. We could run stormwater here. We could amend policies so the developer would have to meet certain requirements during the subdivision phase, and so forth. But if and until actual policy is put forward and voted by through council, this is all just ideas. Until that could changes to will and is an absolute certainty through sound policy, we have no guarantees as residents or a town that these things will happen, when, by who, or how. Without the wills in place, residents cannot support quadrupling the size of the community and undermining the current policies in place through our municipal planning strategy. These are the policies in place to ensure new developments provide for the efficient and effective collection and movement of stormwater, to prevent continued infrastructure flooding of present and future residents. These are also the policies that ensure new developments provide for the safe movement of pedestrians and cyclists as a first priority. And these are the policies in place to ensure new developments provide for access to adequate green spaces, parks, and recreation facilities that are meeting accessibility standards and not in disrepair, as are our current facilities. So just like everyone that has stood here tonight, I ask again that council vote no to this proposed rezoning at the second reading. Thank you.
Okay, that looks like another last call. Is there anybody else up here? This is going to be your last call for public comment? Your final call for public comment? Okay, you know, now, after one final item, we will allow the developer to make a final comment. Can't hear you. My apologies. We are going to make an opportunity for the developer to have one final comment.
Sure. You won't have any problem hearing me, I don't think. So, you know what excites me about being a planner, is opportunities like this. I really appreciate everybody coming out. I was at a meeting last night, and somebody said, you can disagree without being disagreeable, and I really appreciate the respectful comments that everybody's made. And I'm just going to note a couple of things. When we started down this process, the previous planning staff, I said to them and to the town, a comprehensive plan is required for this area. There's no doubt about it, and the developer supports that and would like to see that happen. In 2020, I think it was, the town actually reviewed and adopted a new municipal planning strategy, and the development community, individual property owners, you have to sort of go with the rules that have been adopted, and these are the rules that have been adopted. And so, and the recent rules. Now, no doubt, there's always shortcomings. MPS is our living documents. When you work with them, you always find problems, like you build a new house and you realize you put the closet in the wrong place. Doesn't mean you don't use the closet you got, and that's a little bit what's going on here. There are new regulations. The developer is attempting to comply with it and is supporting some of that long-term planning you're talking about. Excuse me, I've been sitting too long. So, there's no doubt that there needs to be some of that comprehensive planning, and I understand the town's thinking about it. This is a small portion of that, and it seems reasonable in the face of the housing shortage and the need to proceed with this. A couple other things I just want to note, just, I'm sort of, my apologies to have my back to council. I got to find out. The report by C&amp;D, it's been referenced a couple of times, and so just a bit of a clarification, I'm just going to read actually right from it. She states, "Should the applicant provide the information to the satisfaction of council?" And there were a few things that she suggested, no, that suggested, stated outright, that needed more information. She says, "I recommend council approve the rezoning application." So, subsequent to the three issues that were identified by Caroline Roberts, who's a very qualified planner, a letter was sent from the developer, additional stormwater information, conversation about parkland, what was the third one, and infrastructure. So supplementary information was provided, the application was deemed complete, and as such, the recommendation from Caroline was to proceed with the development. The other, the last thing I just want to mention, again, I hate being on my back to you guys. Well, it's not great for me, it's not the best for you. The other thing is, we've had a little bit of a conversation tonight about the requirements of the MPS. The test for the municipal planning strategy, it's not a list of requirements, it's things that council shall give consideration to, and the test is generally consistent, and planners can have disagreements about that, but at the end of the day, it comes down to council, and if they think on balance, if the municipal planning strategy is satisfied, and they could not generally satisfy one policy, but satisfy the bulk of the rest. So it's a really tough job for council to consider that. Your professional planning staff that you've engaged has recommended for this subject to the provision of the documents. The developer has worked in good faith to provide information, so obviously, we hope that it gets a consideration on Monday night. And with that, I think my time is up, so thank you, everyone, for your comments.
Yeah, right on time, yeah. I guess with that, the last mayor's panel meeting.
There being no further business this meeting, I would call for motion to a